Commission meeting this Monday, September 19th. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Becker?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Penia Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
McMahon?
Here.
Chairman Maxwell?
Here.
Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move to the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry, the approval of the agenda. If anybody has any comments, deletions, or additions. If not, I'll ask for a roll call.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
So moved by McMahon, seconded by Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We will move to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to accept the minutes as presented.
Moved by McMahon.
Aye, second.
Seconded by Flaherty. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Public participation portion of the program. If there's anyone that has anything they'd like to say that does not pertain to the agenda, please step forward. I'm going to guess we can skip that part. We have one new piece of business, a public hearing. A petition by the City of DeKalb for approval of rezoning upon annexation from the SFR-1 Single Family Residential District to the HI Heavy Industrial District for the Afton Road right-of-way from East Gerler Road to Kesslinger Road. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you. So what we, pretty simple one. The city would like to request to rezone and property. That's the Afton Road right-of-way that runs from Gerler Road down to Kesslinger, just east of Meta. So when the, few years ago, this history, when Meta was approved, they had 500 acres. Kriego Road was north-south that ran through the property. In order to build their campus, they needed to vacate Kriego Road from Gerler down to this point here, which was done. But that took away a north-south route in that area. So the city initiated in conjunction with Facebook Development, purchased property for a right-of-way from Gerler Road down to Kesslinger, would be known as Afton Road. So that was done. The, it's two 12-foot wide asphalt lanes, ditch drainage. We want to annex that into the city, propose a heavy industrial zoning, which will be compatible with the Meta site. And also, as you can see, brings, once we annex it, the right-of-way will bring other properties contiguous to the city that could potentially be annexed in prior to Meta or a different development going further south. So that does give us a little more advantage to annex additional properties south and east of the Meta campus with this rezoning. So pretty straightforward. We have rezoning findings of fact, which we recommend approval. No comments from the public have been submitted to the city at this time, and we recommend approval. There's a sample motion prepared.
Thank you. Since there's no one present for comment, I will close the public hearing and open it for any questions. Nope?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I'll ask for a motion to approve then.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Flaherty.
Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of the Afton Road right-of-way from East Gerler Road to Kesslinger Road upon annexation from the SFR-1 Single Family Residential District to the HI Heavy Industrial District.
Question by Flaherty. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Standing by McMahon. All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, motion, roll call, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Penia Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright? McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item, we have some considerations, follow-up discussion on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. Staff report, please.
Yeah, this is under consideration. So since we've passed the comp plan, again, appreciate all your hard work. We'd like to take a look at the objectives in there, and there's some directives the comp plan had for the city to take action to help implement the plan. So I copied, went through the, all the objectives and goals and kind of listed a few here. Some aren't listed, others will be done by other departments, others may be done as you're reviewing plans, like connect the streets. That's something you can't really print, writing too much, but it's more done when you're reviewing a plan. But I did bring up a few here just to go through. So I listed the objective then. After that, listed what, if it's a particular article in the UDO that we look to amend, or what kind of follow-up action should we take. So I'll go through a few of these. A couple that we've have started already, or started prior to our, the spring where we did some drafting of some language, so we can kind of pick those up and continue. A few involve amendments to the UDO. There's some items on affordable housing, too, that may need to take more time, involve other people, other groups, et cetera. So let me just go through those briefly. The first one, encouraging planned developments along principal corridors involving site plan review by the commission. I'll take a look at the planned development and encourage, try and come up with language encouraging planned developments more along certain roadways. We could also probably remove the two-acre minimum for planned developments. We've waived that quite a bit over the years, so looks like we could probably remove that also. Another one is installing buffers between industrial and commercial. We have it between industrial, commercial, and residential, of course. We have screening requirements about a fencing and additional landscaping, but this is between industrial and commercial. So we could, we'll look at that and come up with, probably not as stringent as between residential and commercial, so it may be some additional landscaping. But we have, Article 7 has some screening requirements, which we'll focus on and come up with some draft language. The third deals with the, our commercial areas. DeKalb Market Square, Northland Plaza, these larger shopping centers. One is to look at the variety of uses. As you know, in the past few years, we've had some non-retail uses come in. We had residential apartments come in on the upper level of the office building on Hillcrest and Sycamore Road. Recently, we have the self-storage facility at the strip center at Dresser in Route 23. So we have these other uses, since retail is kind of struggling somewhat, come in. And by also the residential component, right now, we have residential in the commercial areas as a special use, but it's got to be on the second level. Can't be on the first level. So perhaps we'll take a look at that and add residential dwelling units as a special use without the restriction about, above the second floor. So maybe open it up for that. Again, with the special use, do you have a review of that, if it's appropriate or not, depending on the location? One area, South Fourth Street, that's the one area where we suggested perhaps an overlay zoning district, particularly with all the development. That's between Taylor Street and Fairview Drive, particularly all the development south of I-88. Overlay, we do have one now. It's the South Andy Glynn Road Overlay District, which was done in 1990, it looks like. But overlay does, it covers a certain area, and there's additional regulations for that area, usually more strict than the UDO. It's very particular to that. When the Home Two Suites came in, we had, we looked at the overlay district standards and kind of, it was part of the staff report for that. So we'll take a look at South Fourth Street. That may be something a little down the road. Parking regulations, this is the one where we've done some work already. Number five indicated, look at the parking demands, make sure they meet the actual use. So in the draft, we've already looked at restaurants, maybe lighten up the requirements for parking for that, because with the changes, all the way from COVID to people are using drive-through more, and so we'll, and we don't want to require parking that's not really required, so it takes up more green space. Now, some retailers are going to want a certain number of parking spaces, regardless of what we want. They just like to have larger parking areas, but I think you can see out there that there's a lot of vacant parking areas that could be an outlot for commercial development in the future. So, and we'll take a look at that. Also residential, the multifamily, we may loosen that up a little bit to not require as many parking, particularly for multifamily, based on, you know, research we've done, input from others, landlords, et cetera. So that's one, kind of low-hanging fruit that we could bring back. We already have a pretty good draft on that. Additional landscaping, take a look at that with more of the flexibility for administrative review on landscaping to make sure that each site, the landscaping kind of fits that particular area, where's the most need for landscaping on the property. Number seven, looks at all, this is good to do anytime, really, look at all the zoning districts in the list of permitted and special uses. Does it make sense? Particularly special uses, do those, is there something unique about them that makes, that we keep it a special use? Or particularly if we've granted several special uses, maybe that should become a permitted use. We did that with digital display signs. It used to be a special use a few years back, and then we were granting one after the other with standards. And what we thought we'd do is, well, let's make it permitted, just get a permit for it along and with standards for the sign, in terms of like when the sign can change, et cetera, and the size, just make it a permit instead of granting, going through a special use process. That's additional time for the applicant and the cost.
Quick question on that particular note. Not to use a broader brush, but for instance, when we were, and the establishment escapes me, but it was East Lincoln Highway where there was, it was fairly patchy in the way that the zoning was actually recorded. Is it possible to take those, you know, larger areas like that, that are spotty, and then have dual-use purpose or dual-zoning for those areas to encourage more development?
You talking about East Lincoln?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look at, I don't know about dual zoning. I mean, we'll have to, you talking about if something is, a use is different than the underlying zoning?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we had that with Home over there. I believe they had commercial zoning, they wanted single-family, because, yeah, that's something we can look at, that would match, I think in the comp plan, land use, I'd have to go look in that part of the area, but it may be an area where we did call for commercial. But open it up to, I think we, the goal is to get the land use matching the actual, on the comp plan, or the zoning matching the land use. Because if you don't, then you got non-conforming situations and what we ran across there. So, yeah, that's definitely what we can look at, so. And the, also on the uses, special uses, well, the recent one, we had a special use for cell company intent on top of Taylor Street Plaza. We've granted quite a few of those. Probably a good idea to maybe make that permitted use, but if it's a new tower, that's a special use. So we've granted several and have not had any really issues with it, so. That's one, for example, that we could probably look to change. Affordable housing, kind of deal with eight and nine on the list, allowing a higher density. And nine refers to smaller lot sizes, smaller homes, that was in the financial plan. We can take, I don't know if Bill wants to mention that a little bit, maybe when we take a look at that, or, I know the housing prices are a little high now, so maybe we take a look when they stabilize a little bit more on that issue.
Ma'am?
Oh, please, yes.
We just talked briefly about that earlier today. When we, when I did a little affordable housing takeoff, it wasn't really a deep study back in March. We had a financial plan that we did. At that point, I suggested the possibility of doing some of these smaller lot, smaller house subdivisions, and made a lot of sense to me. In my spare time, when I'm just looking to escape city business, mentally speaking, I draw house plans. And I've been drawing for my own, my own purposes for about three years, about 20 different versions of the same 1,500 square foot house. I'm sick of it. But at this point, and I'll defer to the experts, and I mean, because housing prices have, well, had spiked, and maybe leveling a little bit. And certainly mortgage rates have changed. This might not be the right time to do an affordable housing study, because things are a little bit volatile and in flux. But possibly as we hit the first quarter of next year, it's a better time to nail some data points and then build up of that. What you think?
That's a great idea. I know that things, even if you build, it's very expensive right now, even a 1,500 square foot home. And I don't know, I don't anticipate those prices coming down, unfortunately. But I have a thought on, can I speak?
Sure.
So over there, where you, where the city tore down the cinema, condos. Condos are affordable still and have them owner-occupied only, no rentals. That would be a dream of mine. And I think I said that to one of the older women. So, and that would be another thing to do for affordable housing, instead of house, houses, because they're so expensive, with the, especially if you want basements these days. So condos, and I talked to some single parents, they're like, that would be great, because we can't afford a house. So condos would be a great starter home for them. Build up some equity and then turn around and buy their 1,500 square foot home down the line.
I think condos are another good option. And what you just said is very true. So these little 1,500 square foot houses I'm designing, five years ago, it might have been $120 a square foot. Now it's 200.
Right.
So I'd be better off to buy a 300,000 square foot house, with a lower tax rate, or tax payment. But, so I think all this is in play. It'd be interesting to see, the City Council is going to start distilling ideas for that area, Blackhawk and Hillcrest, this fall. I suspect it'll be closer to the holidays before they come up with a core list of uses and then probably charge me to do an RFP, see if there's a market for development, or developers, if there's an attraction to developers, to look at those core uses and to suggest to us what might work, what might be problematic. So that's, anyway, on the affordability point, that's where we are. This is just that one. I was going to say something over there. I'm touching on it.
While you're looking at, Maria, I was down in Indiana last weekend, and there is, just as you cross over off of 394, coming along that route going into Indiana, there are hundreds of acres that have been committed to unattached, single-family patio-style homes. And they're starting, I thought the starting price was $174. And I thought, you know, these are, most of the time, you think of these little bit of community homes, and you're looking at them like, ah, but they're beautifully done. Nice homes, set up nicely, they're not attached, so you're not sharing a wall, small property, something that quite literally the homeowners could go out with a little push mower and finish. And I think, and they're not 55-noater, which is the surprising thing to me, because you see that in a lot of the 55-noater communities. And I wonder if, as you're looking at affordable, single-family homes, those might, you know, also, of course, we're in Illinois, and we are.
I know. I think Robinson Farms in Cortland tried to do that, and it was a good idea, just, you know, the recession had a tough point.
Right.
Yeah. But homes are, I mean, everything's just gone up in price-wise. If you do, if you don't want a basement, I think you can do it.
Right.
And we have to get the average home income, family income, household income. Just, we take the standard, underwriting standards. Our census showed us, and now that's two years ago already, the hard data, but we were somewhere around about 50s, and we're not going to get much of a house of that. But I think it's not something we shall, I think we have to keep working on this. And maybe we can entice some people to do some smaller projects, so their risk is less. We have some, we're subsidizing it to some extent by not charging the full price on impact fees and all the rest of that. But I don't think that's enough. There are other ingredients here in selecting a community, obviously. And we're working, this is not the plan commission's purview, but it's your individual concerns, and we're working on it. A community has a lot of violence right now. That's a key ingredient. Something's coming out next Monday, a whole new approach to this, that will be of interest. And your individual thoughts would be welcome in response to this.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I'll just go through the rest here. Quickly, looking at Ag district, of course, we had the large area in the mile and a half with Ag use instead of single-family. That was one of the big changes in the comp plan, comp plan from the '05 one. So we'll take a look at that, creating a district, connecting streets. We can, again, that's more when you're reviewing plans, but we can strengthen the language on that. Mixed use, we talked about that. We've had some recent mixed-use developments from Gore Tower and Cornerstone and Plaza DeKalb, Isaac Suites. Others feature in the AGN area, possibly, including the site we're just talking about at Blackhawk. So we can consider creating a mixed-use zoning district, or we dealt with that in the past with planned development zoning, which has worked pretty well, because it allows the flexibility, the variety of land uses in there, and gives us a little more control over the development. And also perhaps institutional zoning that would cover, the area's pretty much on the, shown as institutional in the comp plan mail. So a lot of the institutions either have commercial zoning or single-family, so sometimes that gets a little confusing for that. But, so that's another one. So that's about 13 objectives I think we can start to tackle if the commission has any others, or priority of any of them. I think with the, looking at them, I think the one with the parking and a few others, we could start working on and bring back to the commission before the end of the year on a few of them.
Sounds like a great plan. Is there any way, and this may sound odd, but is there any way to promote that once we've made those changes, for people that are doing comparative studies by community?
Promote the changes?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess other than even just have news articles written about them, but I mean, if we're trying to loosen restrictions and change zoning.
Yeah, we can make the, you know, development community aware of what we're doing. We do update them quite a bit. This what, changes in the comp plan, what was in there, so we can make them aware of that. With the urban design guidelines, we're part of the plan. We've shared that with a few developers already, or John Pappas, right after we passed it, just to make him aware of any future developments. Here's what the city passed, here's some guidelines for future development, and, you know, we're going to be looking at those when the next project comes in, so.
The other thing is that people find our website, our homepage, City of DeKalb, and do some, we, with Scott Zach on board, we've been a lot more aggressive in doing good news stories about the community, and we can do that, and then have links to other, other parts of the general discourse on housing and on development and so forth. So, yeah, we can do that pretty easily, do it right on the front page.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You get all these cookies when you open up the internet, so we can do the same on our website.
No official motion, but any direction or comments the commission has? We take those, but we'll go ahead and start drafting up some changes for the future.
Starting with the parking stuff sounds like a good place to start.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can take a look at all the, all the other stuff, maybe look more closely at the thing that you sent out before the meeting and make some notes. But the parking one seems like a good, good place to start.
Be your case where we bring it to the commission with the proposed changes. Not a hearing at that time.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that coupled with like the mixed-use development designations in some areas would definitely at least cause some interest.
And I, I think also the signage coming into the city and leaving the city is, if you want something that people are going to talk about, that people are going to see, that's going to promote the city, I think that's something to focus on. It's a fairly simple, easy marketing tool that people see constantly coming in and out. And I think the more we can promote the city with some beautiful signage, I mean, just going along, right now going along Lincoln, the change on Lincoln. I, we were in Typhian last week for lunch one day, and Typhian, you know, they, depending on the day of the week and that, they were really, really busy. So I think those sort of changes and they, I think that would be a really important thing for us to look at.
I think it's a great idea. It's not a real expensive thing to do. We're sort of, I have to say, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and the only reason we haven't proceeded to do something is, well, we knew Peace Road was going to be torn up, and there's a great opportunity to do something down by the interchange, which generates a lot of traffic into town, and 38's another, another piece of that. Obviously, there's, there's pathways from the north and from the southwest as well, but those are the key ones. We'll do something, and with the state project going through, it wouldn't have made any difference this summer, that's for sure. But that's a good winter project to do, and then get some input from other people about what it is, in design-wise, and is it electronic, is it whatever, you know?
Excuse my naivete on this, but do we have any zoning restrictions against billboards? I mean, I thought about this as I was going down to Washington this, this weekend, and, you know, you go through any interchange, and there's hotels, you know, multitudes of things advertising to stop. Do we, I'm assuming we do, which is why there aren't any?
Yeah, we're going to need to sign advertising something that's not on, so we do, like billboards, so we prohibit those.
And just out of curiosity, what was the rationale for that?
I think this aesthetics, I mean, that's been in place for quite a long time, I believe. We don't allow billboards in the city, so.
Yes.
Yeah, long time.
How does anyone feel about that?
I, I, I don't like, I love billboards, but I think, I tend to agree, I think the aesthetic of the city, as we're trying to push the aesthetics of the city up, I think billboards tend to undermine that a bit.
Yeah. We've had too many people trying to fight that, or trying to change that, so. And the US Supreme Court have recently upheld a case in Austin, Texas, that had banned billboards, and there was a lawsuit against them, got to US Supreme Court. They upheld Austin's law, so we're pretty solid on that for restricting those, so.
Yeah. I mean, I can, I understand from an aesthetic standpoint, but by the same token, you could pass by DeKalb off of 88 and not link unless you looked at the historical markers. And so, you know, outside of stopping at the oasis, there's no incentive to pull off the road.
Yeah, we do allow higher signs for properties that front on the tollway or a certain distance away, we allow higher signs, like Super 8, I think it's got a high sign, so it can be seen. But in terms of billboards advertising something that's.
But there's a fairly wide spit, well, with the exception maybe Fourth Street, there's a fairly wide span between anything that's developed and 88. So, I mean, even if it was within a reasonable range, that's not going to accomplish getting anything for anybody that's got a business in DeKalb. Just food for thought. I mean, and, you know, I don't necessarily know that we want to be known as a truck stop destination, but by the same token, if people are looking to frequent the restaurants, and, you know, we are basically the last stop from Rochelle and Sugar Grove, so there's potentially a lot of business to be had in town.
Yeah, I think most of the billboards you see are advertising something that's not even right in the city or.
Their 295, 294 corridor. Where it's everything but businesses or goofy things.
Yeah.
I, you know, but to your point, if there was a way to promote through some sort of signage coming off an exit that does a good job of promoting DeKalb, it's not really a billboard, but a.
There's more keys out there, I think, advertising hotels, and, I mean, that's through the state toll, eh?
Well, even potentially digital signage that just rotates the message, so you don't have a litter of them, but you have one or two that at least would allow people to understand, you know, we're five minutes off the road, and unless you want to hit Rochelle, and if you just pass by Sugar Grove, which of course, there's nothing anyway, so you've left Aurora, and you're not going to find anything until you get to Rochelle. It's a pretty long stretch for people to wait, unless they're just going to go to the oasis, and.
So you want a billboard that says, forget Naperville?
Yeah. You waited long enough to stop. You waited long enough to stop at the right place.
So, I, I think, though, this conversation will change pretty soon, there's going to be some company that's going to come in with all the truck docks that are being built on the south side of DeKalb, south of eighty-eight, uh, that's going to want to create a, a Petro station or a, a truck, a big truck plate, not just, you know, a couple truck bays for fueling, and, uh, when that happens, they're going to want a pole sign, and they're going to want to be able to get good signage to direct people to wherever they are, and, uh, then I think we'll have a more, we'll see what the market is thinking is reasonable, and we'll have to either adjust or explain why we can't do that, and they'll probably say something one way or another, uh, you know, if it means, if it discourages them from locating, then, then they'll let us know, we, we'll, we'll find that out pretty quick. The, so face, I just say one last thing, so, across on Facebook, they're not interested in seeing a big truck sign, but, uh, there are, there's a thousand acres east of Peace, north of the tollway, up to thirty-eight, that is within the city's planning area. Something's going to happen, something's going to go there, one of those farms is eventually going to get developed for, even if it's just a twen- ten, ten-acre truck thing, so we'll have to deal, deal with that. The other thing is, I have tried unsuccessfully to deal with the tollway, uh, Toll Highway Authority, which has control over all the signage on, on the tollway property, and their system is pretty unchanged for decades. There's more, uh, information about Sycamore's ho- hotels and food, if you're westbound on, on, if you ever look at this, on, uh, on eighty-eight and you're getting off at Peace Road, than there is about DeKalb, so that's just the system, and I think it, we're going to have to try to more aggressively flex that a little bit, other than it's, it says, uh, food, fuel, house, or, uh, hotels, and it's just so generic that it doesn't help you, it doesn't say you can get off, but you don't know how far you have to go.
You don't.
Yeah.
Well, I know that, uh, if you get off on ninety, I think at forty-seven, there's a sign that says NIU, and then that, there's no.
That's it, how do you get there?
Yeah.
NIU, thanks a lot, I'm on.
After they, you're on your own.
You know, if it, if it turns out to be a Buc-E's, then I'll.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, no, I, again, I understand the aesthetic aspect of it, but I guess from that standpoint, people were arguing about the aesthetics of the wind farms, and we know that that was a good cause, and not that this is renewable energy, but it promotes DeKalb, so, something to consider.
Or maybe we could combine it too, put a big sign on one of those.
Absolutely, just have to read each blade as it's going around. Okay. Well, thank you for, uh, doing the analysis, I think those are great steps.
Thanks for your input.
Of course.
You can strike off.
Anything else? Uh, if not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who, Penya Graham, second, did Vice Stoker, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same as sign.